Twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, a meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board to order, six-thirty P.M. I would also like to announce that all those in attendance at this meeting is being recorded for distribution on the Whitman-Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found on WHCA TV. Hanson Town Planning Board is opening the meeting tonight at five-forty-two Liberty Street, Hanson, Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, six-thirty P.M. Select Board Meeting Room, lower level. Call to order. First thing we have in minutes, a motion to move on later on. Still moves?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You can go to the six-thirty P.M. hearing on Meadowbrook Farms Residential Subdivision at Zero County Road. Accessing map seventy-four, block zero, block seven and eight. Applicants Ellis Building Development, Representative Morse Engineering Company Incorporated. You have some information on it, Tony?
Yes, the applicant engineer sent me a request to continue the public hearing to May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We did receive a letter from them today requesting the continuance. I'm showing the letter to the planning board over tape. Just as some points of interest, we have received comments back from fire, police, border health, and highway department, and we also have received the peer review from Verdantis, which was hired by the planning board in the town to review the project. And that's been passed along to the engineer, and so they are asking for a continuance to address the comments in the peer review letter from Verdantis and also, I believe, a peer review letter from Weston and Sampson, who was doing the peer review on the project on behalf of the Conservation Commission. So if the board so entertains granting their continuance to May eighth?
Okay, do we have a motion? Do I have? The continuance?
Was there a reason for the continuation?
The reason for the continuation is the fact that based on the, they need time to review the peer review report and address the issues brought up in that report.
And just for clarification, they were via applying or were they continuing the application, original application?
This is a continuation of the original application, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the continuation to May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three for the hearing for Meadowbrook Farms.
You have a second?
Sure, second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
John, did you vote?
Yes. So that's for one. Okay, we can't go any further, so seven P.M. Make a motion to move the, excuse me. Before we do that, do we want to speak with the conservation at all?
Are you here on this one?
I'm here for, at seven P.M. hearing. Oh, okay, sorry. Now we can go back and do the minutes if you want. We've got half an hour of twenty-five minutes. Want to do that?
Sure.
So I made a motion to move the minutes. Now.
Second.
I'm looking second in. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Four oh one. We have time, so might as well.
Yep.
on that table by the door, if, when you leave, if you could just put your name and address and phone number and our email contact if you so choose to do. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-seventh.
Second. Any additions or deletions? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Four oh one.
And I'll make a motion to approve the April tenth meeting minutes.
Second. Any additions or deletions? Everybody set? You need a little more time? John? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Four oh one.
If you choose to, Mr. Chair, and move forward, we have a new, we've chosen a new planning board administrative assistant. She's here this evening. She was scheduled for seven-twenty. If you'd like to move up her introduction and appointment.
Sure. Is she in the audience now, the one that's smiling with her hand up?
So I don't know if you want to bring that forward?
She's already on board?
Well, the planning board needs to officially appoint her.
Oh, we have to?
Yeah, and then, yeah, and they need to, so she's scheduled for seven-twenty if you want to move that up.
Sure. I'll make a motion. A motion to appoint the planning board member administrative assistant.
Well, before we do that, I think you need to, because it's going to be out of order, so.
Right, you're going to take it out of order. We need a motion to take it out of order, the seven-twenty P.M. appointment. The appointing of new planning board administrative assistant, Kimberly Cunningham.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Who motioned?
A motion.
Motion. Okay.
Four oh one.
Okay, so I'd like to introduce to you Kimberly Cunningham. If you want to come up, Kim.
Hello, nice to meet you. I'm Kim. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you. Where are you from?
I am originally from Hanson.
Oh, okay.
But I now live in Kingston.
Kingston.
Mm-hmm.
Can you get that from here?
Yep, just can't get to Hanson from there.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Have you been working like this with other towns or?
I have not.
You have not?
I have not. But I'm very excited.
Yeah, so out of all the candidates that we had, Kim rose to the top for qualifications. So was it last week, week before? She came in to see the town administrator and went over everything. So we made the choice to have, offer Kim the position. She accepted. She'll be beginning on May first. I figure we'll bring her in on a, let's say, a week that we're not having a meeting, sort of just, you know, ease her into the position. And then, so on the next meeting, which is technically scheduled for May eighth, she'll be here with us as the new administrative assistant and helping me out in the office, which will be great, and handling all the admin duties nineteen hours a week. Is it nineteen or do?
Nineteen point five.
Nineteen and a half, yeah. So we'll figure out a schedule for her based on her schedule and make it all work.
I have administrative experience, but.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I was just going to say I have administrative experience, just not planning board experience, that's.
You are just for the planning, right?
Well, she's going to be assisting with Economic Development Committee as well. So that's going to be the two, the two boards that she'll be helping out with. And when I say Economic Development Committee, you know, handling the transcription of the minutes, you know, and any other admin duties. So we'll make it all work until we can find enough funds to maybe make a full-time position.
And just a note on Economic Development Committee, we don't meet as often as planning board.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So we won't take quite as much time on Economic Development Committee, which I'm also a part of.
Yeah, I made her aware that Economic Development Committee is once a month, so that's the good thing.
Welcome. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept some old.
So how about to vote to appoint Kimberly Cunningham as the new planning board administrative assistant?
There you go. So said.
Who wants to make the motion? Mr. Campbell make the motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second, any discussion?
Second, Mr. Cole.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
So we'll get in touch with you tomorrow and we'll set something up for you to come in, talk tomorrow and get you squared away for Monday.
Okay, do you want to stay?
It's up to you. If you'd like to see how things operate.
I would like to, kind of, go back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think it's long overdue that you've got an assistant, so something to fill it out.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like we have an extra chair, though. It's a problem.
Well, we'll find one.
All right.
What else we got?
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, or so entertained, under administration, there are two invoices to need to be paid. If you'd like them.
I'll make a motion to move the Town Planner update of the invoices to be paid to Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, I do. Okay. I know that we voted for Joe to sign those. Are we all going to sign this or do we want to vote to make, allow him to sign them or what do you want to do?
Well, he has authorization to sign, but because he's not here today, I would recommend that members of the board sign. So the first invoice is going to be for the private waste signs. The highway department has purchased all the signs and all the hardware that goes with it. And so this is for that invoice, which totals out to eighty-nine, eighty-one, eighty, which comes in under what was appropriated by a few dollars back in town meeting.
Have any of those signs been placed yet?
My understanding is he has put up some signs.
I've heard a rumor, a couple.
Yeah. So that's just the first one. That's just the stuff that goes with it.
Yeah, give me a look.
for public hearing ads for the zoning amendments that will be going through tonight.
John? Doesn't matter. That's enough. You just gave him a break.
Mr. Chair, if you want to take out of order and move up the board business, the member subcommittee updates?
I'm sure you do. The motion to move up the.
That'd be seven fifteen.
Subcommittee updates. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye. Use regulations. Nowhere, okay. Joe Campbell, what have you been doing? Right here. You get a black star.
I know Mr. Campbell is an OCP alternate delegate, and there is an OCP, OCPC meeting Wednesday evening. As the delegate, I'll be attending that. There also is a OCPC Finance Committee meeting tomorrow evening. I'm not sure if Mr. Campbell is going to attend, but he was invited.
Okay. It says to me next, the High Street Park Committee. We haven't met yet, but we've been out of schedule. Last meeting we had, we didn't have a quarrel, but that's about it for now. We're on a hold, waiting for plans, final plans. Kevin?
I don't have an update except for we do have our next meeting scheduled for May twenty-fourth.
John Kimmel, community group, preservation committee.
No updates.
No updates? Okay, go. How about Paul, drainage and stormwater committee?
No, nothing since that article that we discussed some time back.
I don't know, I'm a bi-quick. I probably have plenty to do in town planner update. You have an update, Town Planner?
I'm in the process of filing for the full applications for the five grants for the town. I've also sent along, I believe I mentioned this at last, the MBTA zoning, we're currently in compliance as far as our action plan. Moved forward with creating districts and answering the information that's in the toolkit that is provided by the state. Old Colony Planning Council is our technical assistance group, so that information has been sent off to them for their review, and I'm waiting to get feedback from them and see, you know, what they think of it and move on with the next step. One of the things I think we're going to have to be doing very shortly, probably after the town meeting, is community outreach. I'm going to try and coordinate with Old Colony Planning Council on that, and that might be just having a public hearing to let everyone know, so maybe at the end of May or the beginning of June, have a public hearing so that, you know, everyone can come in and give voice their thoughts and opinions on the new zoning. At this point, I've, I'm looking at creating three districts along the Main Street corridor, two of which fall within the half-mile radius of the train station, and the third one is outside the half a mile, but going further up Main Street to try and encompass the LZ Thomas School, because we know, you know, that site has potential, if the town chose to do so, to create new housing. And that's also part of one of the full applications for the grants to try and get pedestrian improvements, AKA sidewalks, from the LZ Thomas to High Street, where we have sidewalks Verdantis is the company that's doing the pedestrian improvements under the grant that we received from last year, and so they have done some preliminary work. The next step is they're trying to set up a meeting with different boards in town, and then they're going to do a survey and create an existing conditions plan. And my understanding, the way they're going to do it is by drone, so, and they figure that the accuracy is within about an inch, which I thought was pretty impressive, because I know that the drones were something that's been, they've been around for a while, but I guess the accuracy is, you know, got quite better in the last few years. So that's what they're going to do. And that's what, that's been taking up the majority of my time at this point.
Anything more on fourteen?
We're looking, we're working with our local politicians to try and see if maybe there will be some kind of federal grant money available that might assist Hattie Rockland in improving that water line, but it's been a slow process, so there hasn't been a lot of movement on that, but we're still, still trying, so. I don't know where it's going to land at this point, but it'd be a shame to have that project die on a vine, so to speak.
Will the state give you an extension, you think, because of it?
Well, there's been, the state has reached out, they're trying to set up a meeting with everyone again. I don't know how much of an extension, they know the predicament that we're, the town's in, and we're just trying to find a solution that will make it easy for everyone and beneficial to everyone. So I don't know how it's going to turn out. And I think that's pretty much it for now, so. About seven o'clock.
Four. Five.
I can read the public hearing notice, won't you? So this is a public hearing notice that was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on April thirteenth, Thursday, April thirteenth, I'm sorry, Thursday, April sixth, and Thursday, April thirteenth. Town of Hanson Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Zoning Act, you are hereby being notified of a public hearing to amend the Town of Hanson Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw as per below. Town of Hanson Planning Board, seven-eight-one-two-nine-three-nine-zero-three-five, will be conducting a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P.M. at the Hanson Town Hall's Selectmen's Meeting Room, lower level, five-forty-two Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass. The planning board will review proposed amendments to the Town of Hanson Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the following sections of the Hanson zoning bylaws or take any other action relative to thereto. Number one, Section six, Use Regulations Amendments. Number two, Section six point one, detached accessory apartments, this is a new bylaw. Section three, number three, Section six O, battery storage farms, it's a new bylaw. Number four, Section six N, medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays, new bylaw. Number five, Section seven, pork chop and hammerhead lots, amendments. Number six, Section seven, lot access, driveways, amendments. Number seven, Section seven C, accessory building, amendments. Number eight, Section seven D, off-street parking and loading areas, amendments. Number nine, Section twelve, adequate access determination, amendments. A copy of the revised bylaws may be reviewed at the Office of the Town Clerk, Hanson Town Hall, five-forty-two Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass, during normal business hours. All persons, parties, or corporations interested therein may appear and be. All persons, parties, or corporations interested therein may appear and be heard in a, in relation thereto. Hanson Planning Board, Joseph Campbell, Chairman, Thursday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So if you'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Motion to open the public hearing, is that what you said? Any discussion? No in favor?
Aye.
Four one. Do you wanna go through each one or?
Yes. Yeah, so the first one you'll see is, if you look at item number five, the first thing you'll see in item number five was a letter written to the Select Board. And you'll see that there's an index. So number, so number one, which is known currently in the meeting warrant as Article number thirty-two. And that was for use regulations. And what's taking place in that section of the bylaw is the placement of the word contiguous when it comes to the upland, the wetland, I'm sorry, the upland requirement. The requirement is ninety percent upland on any lot in this, in the different zones. But the word contiguous was not in there, so you had cases of lots having pockets of upland to create the ninety percent. So the word contiguous will be placed in all sections of the set bylaw. And contiguous just means that the ninety percent or the thirty-six thousand, depending what, whatever the square foot is, depending on the zone, will have to be in one area. It won't be, you know, pockets of upland to create that. The next change there is lots, corner lots. So the setback for corner lots must, front yard setback must be met from both streets. That would be changed to require that the front yard setback applied to one street and then the side yard setback would apply to the second street. So that would eliminate what's happened in town in quite a few subdivisions is small parcels being created so that that corner lot is no longer a corner lot. So those are the two most significant changes there is contiguous and the corner lot issue. So that what you see is the areas that are highlighted in yellow is how the new wording in there. And it just goes through all the districts, all the residential districts, the flexible overlay district. We did not apply it to, we did not apply it to, I believe, the commercial and business zones.
Nice question.
Sure.
Have we looked at where other towns do? Was this going to run by Town Council?
Yes, all the amendments that you see here tonight have all been reviewed by Town Council. Other towns, not all, but a few do use the one street. If you're on a corner lot, sometimes it's usually the frontage, sometimes it's where the, your front door is. And that's the front yard setback and then the secondary street would be a side yard setback. Section number two, which is section, would be Section six point one, this is for detached accessory apartments. And this would be a whole new section and what this would allow is for the creation of, we have in-law apartments now, this would allow for the creation of a detached accessory apartment. So in buildings that are garages, barns, carriage houses, things like sheds, greenhouses, and chicken coops would not be utilized. Would also allow for, if someone was to build a new garage and they wanted to add space above it. This is to create, purposes to create areas where, let's say you may have folks that are, say, elderly or family, but don't wanna live in the same house. It allows them to downsize, but yet stay on the property. This is not, this zoning bylaw does not allow for rental of the accessory dwelling unit. The owner must live there on site. It does allow for folks that, say, migrate south during the winter. But while they're gone, their, their living space cannot be rented out. It applies, it has to be done through a special permit. It calls for, you know, parking, screening, et cetera. I don't know if you wanna ask for public comment with each of these, Mr. Chair, as we go along? Or do you wanna do it all at the end?
We can, we can do it as we're going along. If somebody has something to ask. Everybody understand what, what, what we've got here? It's some of the changes that are to be added to or maintained. Do anybody have any interest in it?
Are you gonna vote on these one at a time or are you gonna vote them all at once?
Probably all at once.
Well, then I'd like to speak on number two.
Number two. Well, we're on what, number two now, right?
Right, so.
Where's a good place for me to be?
Right where you're at.
Yeah.
Okay, just identify yourself.
I'm Frank Skellinger. I live at seventy-five Spring Street in Hanson. For the record, I'm also the conservation agent. Not that that is relevant. Now, I have a number of comments on this particular bylaw and I'll, I'll give it. I'll give you, rather than read them, I'll give this to Tony for the record. I previously sent a letter in January with one of my comments. I won't read that also, that should add it to the record. The proposal should be tabled, I think, because I don't believe it addresses the need for infrastructure planning. I think this is an example of the cart before the horse. Basically, this bylaw would add a burden to the wastewater treatment which in Hanson is relied upon in septic systems. So the bylaw allows for accessory buildings that have no more than two bedrooms. Two bedrooms is two bedrooms more than most houses are approved for, which means as a rule, their septic systems would have to be reviewed and perhaps redesigned. Every, the, the proposal says you can have an accessory building that's nine hundred square feet in area. Nine hundred square feet is the size of a small ranch. It's basically a twenty-four by thirty-six building. With two bedrooms. In a, in a well zone two, where nitrogen control is needed, the lot sizes may, excuse me, may be too small to accommodate the increase in the number of bedrooms. In that particular zone, four bedrooms are allowed per acre. So if an accessory building were allowed with two bedrooms in a lot that had a three-bedroom house, you'd need a variance and you'd probably have to incorporate nitrogen handling equipment in the septic system. One of the things that was done many years ago by Planning Board was to create Zone double A. Double A residence zone is primarily in the western side of town and it required larger lot, longer frontage. And the reason that was done is because in that section of town, the soil is not very friendly to septic systems and water table is high besides. That was a very smart thing that the Planning Board did. But this proposal would basically undo that by putting more pressure on the soil in an area that we rely on the aquifer to supply Crystal Springs wells. In the Mont Pontet Subwatership, which is everything below the twenty-seven on the southeastern part of town, we have a Massachusetts TMDL, total maximum daily limit for phosphorus. We know that septic systems are a major source of phosphorus and the increased density of dwellings and population in this area is highly undesirable. What's needed to put the horse before the cart is for the Planning Board to plan for the infrastructure that supports this additional load we need for you all to go back to fifty years ago when the first wastewater treatment plants were proposed and revisit that and get that back on the table. I have other comments that deal with the increase in population and the increase in services that would be required by the town. If this is an effort to improve the revenue situation in town, it isn't going to work because the number of services that the town will have to provide these additional people will take, take away all that increase in revenue. One other thing that is said in the bylaw or in the, in the material is that this bylaw will provide benefits to older homeowners who are going to be able to rent out this accessory building and therefore be able to pay their taxes more easily. As an older homeowner, I can't imagine myself spending the money to put up a small ranch in my, on my lot and revising my septic system in order to make that happen. So I would propose that you table this one and not approve it for town meeting.
Hi, my name is Jeremy, six fifty-nine, Liberty Street. So while I respect the Conservation Agent's comments and his, his comments on this proposal, I don't believe that it shouldn't up to him to decide what, what happens in the town before the rest of the residents have had a chance to, to vote and discuss the matter, which is the normal way that we, that we, in a democracy, this is how things work. He brought up two points that I'd like to kind of reiterate. And his proposal is about the septic systems as well. If, if it's like an older septic system, we're, we're considering this for like elderly family members who will be living on our property. Our property is quite large in size, it's about like one acre. We know that we would, I mean, it says right in the regulation, you would have to get the board health approval on the septic systems. So the board health would have the option then to review our septic system. And we already know that we're probably gonna have to upgrade our septic system, which is probably good for the town. Second of all, he says that you can only have four bedrooms in, in like, per like acre of length, correct, probably? So, I mean, once again, he's, he's applying the regulations for everybody. Where, obviously, you know, all I'm saying is that in each case, all of this will be reviewed. A, when the board helps reviews it. And second of all, when you pull a special permit. And all those objections can be reviewed at that time. I just think it's dismissive to say you shouldn't put this to the town for a vote when it's just one person's opinion. I respect his opinion. And he said also that, you know, I don't wanna have to, you know, I mean, I wouldn't wanna build one. Well, fine, you don't have to build one on your property, but there's other people in the town that perhaps do wanna build like an accessory apartment. All I'm saying is give people the option to, A, put it to a vote to the rest of the town at the town meeting next week. And B, not everyone's situation is gonna be the same. So my situation might be different than the general there and maybe somebody else might be a little bit different. That's all I'm saying, just put it up to the vote and we can discuss the matter. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good.
Yeah, I'd just like to read into the record, this is a memo from, that came January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Antonio DeFrias, Town Planner, and this is from Mr. Skellinger, but I do wanna read into the record. Referencing proposed zoning amendments and new regulations in detached accessory dwelling units through two emails, one five two thousand twenty-three. Tony, as you requested, I reviewed the proposed changes to the bylaws and have the enclosed comments. Most of them reflect my view as a Hanson citizen who lives in a double A zone. From the point of view of conservation, my comment relates to detached accessory dwellings. Hanson does not have the infrastructure to support increased population density and the impact of additional wastewater pressure on the groundwater will have a long-term detrimental effect. This is especially true in the densolated populated, populated areas around Oldham Pond and the Mont Pontet area. Also, the western part of town has a large area of till and high water table that allows septic effluent to threaten the extensive wetlands there and the underlying aquifer that supports the Crystal Springs wells. Before the town allows development to increase density, some serious planning for wastewater treatment needs to be done. Frank, Dr. Frank Skellinger, Conservation Agent, Town of Hanson. So I just wanted to read that to the record, so that.
Thank you.
Can I make two comments?
Sure.
The first one is, you know, I, I remember when we were discussing this in our meetings, I had asked whether we could make sure that driveways from side streets based on the, on the first thing that's in here.
Yeah, that first item.
Is that we don't have driveways coming up side streets, that if there's an accessory building, there should be only one driveway.
Number six, we'll talk about those driveways.
Okay. And my, my other comment is, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't hold this one off until the October, October town meeting, because, you know, I think Frank makes some good points. And, you know, from a lot of these lots, once they're approved for this, they wouldn't come under conservation in the, in the true sense because, you know, they're outside jurisdictional areas. But all of those conversation, conservation issues are valid. So I think that's something that we did not discuss in this and I feel strongly that we should.
Oh, no, I, I contend to agree with you, but we have.
Oh, no, I, I can tend to agree with you, but we have, as far as population density going, we have developments going on all over the place in the town.
Two wrongs don't make it right.
I know, that, we're kind of stuck in the middle of both, both issues.
Any activity that took place in the hundred-foot buffer zone would require, would require filing with the conservation.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that, but like, Mike, the point that I'm trying to make is that there's areas in the W A zone that wouldn't come under conservation. But at the same time, you know, those will still have an effect on the groundwater and several other issues. So it's just the point that I'm trying to make.
Question of clarity. I thought we had discussed the accessory dwellings having their own septic system, not being tacked on to the.
That's something you can't put in the zoning bylaw. That's something that would have to be regulations that the Board of Health have to create or review.
So it could be the same septic, upgraded septic system.
It'd be.
It's on septic.
Right, it'd be, it'd be up to their discretion as to how they wanted to handle that.
As it is, it's going to go in front of the Board of Health for evaluation.
Yes.
All, all the regulations that have to be built, setbacks and all. There's, there's valid points here. Everybody has brought up. But I think my own personal opinion is that we have to do something so that, like this gentleman was saying, for the family, if your family decides that they want to come and live next, next to their son or daughter and have a facility there. And even if the septic system or the soil won't take another bedroom or two bedrooms, they can do a tight tank. But it's up to the, really up to the Board of Health to make those decisions. If it does not perk, there are other alternatives. I believe, I'm not in the business, so. I, I don't know, but I know down on Ocean Ave, I think it was, they have tight tanks down there where they can get it pumped out. I mean, when you have an elderly person or two of them living together, I don't think you use as much water as you would as a whole family. But that's not up to me to, to do that because I don't know what the regulations are. And it seems as though the systems are changing with engineering. Now they put in, I, I don't know if it works or not, but they put that housing up on the side street, down the Aunt Philip Street, I think it is. And they have some sort of system to take care of that facility. So I don't know if they can design something, but if we have some sort of building requirement and it's up to the individual to see if it will work or not. I don't think everybody's going to rush into building accessory, I'm surely, I'm not. And I don't want to get into the rental business, so I'm not going to add it. And my parents aren't alive, unfortunately. I would be a lot younger, so that would be a good thing. But I, I'm for putting it out there. And if it works with the conservation setbacks and the amount of water and whatever the D E P requires, you have to go by the rules. But it, it should be some avenue for the people in the town to have their kids, say they get divorced or something, your daughter gets divorced and they have a, they don't have a place to live. They don't have enough money and, and et cetera. There could be all kinds of things that I think that we could help them somehow. Families and so on, which are important, but I'm not.
I don't tend to agree.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know septic systems. I've never done anything. It's always the engineers that design the system, we put them in. And Board of Health should know, Conservation knows. If you're too close to the wetlands and things like that, they still have to go through everybody. So I don't know if we can, you know, tone it down a little bit. But I don't, I can't see any way of doing it. Either they can do it or then they have to go through all the regulations or they can't do it. There doesn't seem to be a halfway there that I can see or somebody has a suggestion. But that's the way I look at it. I certainly won't be putting it up next to my house unless there's a reason.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
One of the other things that I have not heard anyone discuss to this point is we both have, we have a, a master plan. And in the master plan, it talks about density and the rural character of the town. This is going to have a, I think, a significant impact in certain areas where, you know, you know, it's going to affect the rural character of the area. You know, this becomes something that, you know, we'll take High Street as a good example. It's an area where it's likely, you know, most of the houses up there would go with this idea. And it's, it's just going to be more dense. That's, it holds in the open space plan as well, thanks Frank, isn't it? Discussions related to that. So, you know, we have these two plans that both boards have created with the idea that we wanted to try to maintain rural character in town. And both of those plans were forwarded by both of those boards except at the town meeting. So I think it's important to consider those ideas forward.
We, we have a bylaw now that allows for in-law apartments. I don't know how many have been put in the town because of that bylaw. So it's for relatives.
Yeah, I mean, we, we know that they exist. Unfortunately, we know that some exist without, have been done without permits.
Well, I know when we put the bylaw in that it had to be restricted, deed restricted in order to have an in-law apartment, either attached or detached, I'm not sure.
I don't recall that the zoning bylaw currently says that there's a deed restriction. It does say that the special permit will expire when the property is sold and that the new owners, if they choose to continue with the in-law apartment, have to go back to the zoning board and reapply for the special permit. I don't recall it saying anything about a deed restriction.
When we made that bylaw, there was a deed restriction, unless it got changed somehow. But.
I couldn't tell you.
I don't, I don't know either.
Just to go back, if I may, to Mr. Cohen's question under the section C, which is the standards that are required. It's one through eleven. And so number eight talks about, it has to conform with the state building code. Must mean all zoning setback requirements. Number nine is that they must get approval from Board of Health. They must get approval from the weapons, from the conservation, if so, if it applies. And then there's the last one, which is development of housing units for disabled and handicapped individuals. The zoning board appeals may allow reasonable deviations from the state conditions when necessary. So that being said, I mean, I don't know if the board still wishes to vote all these and one, at once at the end here, or if you want to vote these individually as you go through.
I would like to do it individually, so.
So you want to go through them first and then vote on them individually?
Do you want to hold all of them or just ones?
No, go through, go through all of them and then you just go back and individually vote on each one?
Call out ones that.
Call out, call them out.
Oh, I'm okay with that.
So the next one is.
Before we were, I think there was one more.
Oh, yeah, check. Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to comment as well. I mean, children, and we just speak on as well. In terms of the rural character of town, and we really allow in-law apartments. So I'm not sure if it would be an added, an in-law apartment to a house, making it extra large and big. I already have a small, small house next to the house. I don't have to change the, the difference between the rural character of town. It's making a huge house. And also the same demands that we put on the in-law apartment, on the separate accessory apartment. We put an in-law apartment in terms of the hydration and services that we demand, not really a big change.
I think, I, I don't agree. And my reason is that, you know, an in-law apartment is usually above, above the garage or attached to the building itself, right? And we, we, right now, we're talking about nine hundred square foot accessory building. So, you know, I don't know if you realize that the size, you know, of nine hundred square feet is pretty large. It's actually larger than this room, I think, right? So, and it's, it's pretty significant size. So, and that's why I mentioned, you know, the rural character because I can imagine going down the road and seeing nine hundred square foot apartments in the back of every house on High Street. Think about how that would look, right?
Yeah, you have, you also have the dwelling units in this town that are much more than nine hundred square feet. You have four and five hundred houses, which are two to three thousand square feet.
Right, so now.
My house, yeah, so when you add them all together, it's still the same thing. You could have like an in-law apartment that's nine hundred square feet square. Nine hundred square feet is a one-bedroom apartment in some area. And in this case, it's like a two-bedroom. By my, what was just pointing, what's, what is the difference between having like an in-law like apartment that say has one or two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen and a bathroom? And building a separate building, you know, which is also nine hundred square feet. It's basically the same thing. I mean, I don't believe that it, it affects the rural character. I mean, how many homes have been built in Hanson the last twenty-five years?
Right, so.
So rural character of Hanson has changed a lot since, since fifty years ago. I think someone pointed out fifty years ago.
So, you know, I, I think you're, you're kind of missing my point. So most, you know, in-law apartments are attached to the building, right? So what you, when you go down the street, right? And you, you may notice that the building's a little larger because it has an in-law apartment attached to it, okay? So now, when you go down the street, not only are you going to see the building, which could as well have an in-law apartment in that as well, and then an accessory building behind it. So now you've got a larger building and also you have another large building, which is not a garage, is the difference.
Well, then you go back to the conservation, apparently that the gentleman pointed out earlier, you can only have four bedrooms per acre, isn't that correct? So it's not like somebody who has a five-bedroom house is going to go build an extra two bedroom. He won't be allowed to do that under those regulations.
That's pretty specific, though, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, I think, I think you have to consider each situation a little bit differently. Not, not every situation is going to be street, not every, not every street is going to be the same with the Hanson. There's some streets in Hanson that are more rural than others. And I think as part of the permitting process, because there's a special permit group for each of these, so the special permitting process will review all those issues, I would say, correct? In point one, so, I mean, I'm on Main Street, Leverett Street, so my zone might be a little bit different than say, so on those side streets, we're a little bit more rural. Obviously, the Board of Health and the Planning Department is going to review that at that time. I just think it's very difficult to quit and say, well, that's just not going to work because every situation is a little bit different, correct?
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you read the, the master plan and the open space plan?
No. I've read this.
The, I will say that the nine hundred square feet matches our in-law requirement. It's no larger, so. Our, the nine hundred square feet matches the current in-law square footage that we, we allow.
We already allow it now.
Correct, for in-law apartments.
For in-law apartments.
If it doesn't.
Construction.
Yes.
True.
Yeah.
If, if, if it, if it doesn't conform to our rules and regulations, it cannot be built.
Completely.
The only thing to do is to, I could see here be to draw it down some, but it's already that now. So. You know, we can always, if, if, if it's not working, I mean, a lot of people are going to, I, I can't answer them, but what we've seen over the years, I've only seen maybe two houses in Hanson that have really expanded with an in-law. Because the in-law had a lot of money, obviously, and he just wanted to put something larger. But majority of them, you don't even notice. You know, if they, if they take their garage and, what's that, twenty-four by twenty-four garage and then they use the second floor. But a lot of them don't want to use the second floor because they're getting old and they might be handicapped and so on and so forth, so it becomes difficult. So now they'll have to move things around. Some of them, I know there was one on, one of the subdivisions off of King Street where they added like a room off of the living room, which was a kitchen, open living room, kitchen combination and one bedroom. And some of them don't even have a kitchen in them because they use, they have dinners with the, with the family all the time. But a lot of people, some people, when we made that bylaw originally, were saying that they have relatives, they'd like to come visit them and a one-bedroom won't work for them. And a lot of them that moved down to Florida, for example, they want to come up and visit with a, with their, either a relative or a friend or something, so they, they need a two-bedroom. But I can't see anything going higher than that, two bedrooms. I don't think they should. We have it limited to two bedrooms, correct? Yeah. That, that's just my opinion. We've got to do something. I mean, you, you look in, all over the country, there's an issue because there's not enough area for people to do the, these things that have in-laws and to, there's not enough of rental property. And, and the rentals that are out there right now are really expensive. You know, I think that, my opinion would be that if we try it and if it's not going to be work out, then I don't know, we could come up with some sort of changes with monetary or monetization, so. But I, I, I don't know how it'll, it'll affect the town. I mean, you get more real estate money coming in for the town, but services, I'm not sure. You know, it's like condominiums. Everybody didn't like condominiums coming into towns and stuff. But when you look at them, they're making up, they make an awful lot of money for the town because there's very few kids living in condominiums. There's more adults that are living there. And then when the, the, the other thing that came into town was the, not nursing homes, what was that up at the corner?
Assisted living?
Yeah, assisted living. And that's gave the town a lot of extra taxes. And he filed a, filed a complaint to me one day that they had to send the ambulance up there quite often to pick up people and take them to the hospital. But I asked him, did they get paid for it? And he said, well, yeah, we do, so, you know. I, I don't know. It, it seems that, that it's crossed the country and Tony has done the research on it. And we, we've got to do something, I feel. That's only my opinion. Somehow we can make it work.
And we have a three-story apartment building, one up on Main Street. So services people, the town.
Yeah.
Maybe railroad cars on the side or something.
Want me, want me to continue?
Yeah. Sorry.
So.
Or, what's the next one?
So the next one is section six oh, this is a new bylaw, this is for battery storage farms.
Is that Island Three?
Yes, sir. And this is for battery storage farms. And this isn't a case of a battery storage system that is an accessory, let's say, to a solar farm. This is strictly a battery farm that stores electricity that comes from the grid, powers up the batteries and then releases the energy to the grid. We have one that's being proposed in town, but we have no regulations regarding them. So these regulations would, you can't, you can't stop them, but you can regulate. And that's what these, this amendment would, this new bylaw would do, would assist in regulating. One of the issues that, or one of the things that becomes an issue is where, where, where can you put them? Or where can you allow them? And it's, and that becomes the difficult part because if you turn around and deny, because you can't deny them, you can't, you also can't pigeonhole them. There's been a recent case, that was the Waltem case, that. There's been a recent case, that was the Waltem case, that pretty much talked on similar situation. But these regulations, because we have none, at least we'll have something, and have some kind of control and oversight on the battery storage farms. So, that's what those regulations talk about.
So, public safety?
Yes.
My first question, yeah. Other than that, what do I do? You know, but I think the public safety is a huge issue. What I don't see in here is a reference to the Fire Department, and they're going to be to regulate the public safety. I'd like to see that.
That is a, is it?
Yeah, and I, yeah, sorry.
Eight, number eight, we're slides up.
And if I remember correctly, we went over the distances and staying away from structures, so.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, talks about noise, fire safety compliance.
We'd have to go through the Fire Department anyway, I would assume.
Operation and maintenance, noise analysis.
Can I add one other quick point? Then the other one is aesthetics, right? Which I think is important, because, you know, this could end up at the, you know, intersection of a, of a small neighborhood down in Mont Ponce, right? Um, you know, and I think that's concerning if we don't have some way of buffering this.
We do have in design standards, we talk about signage, lighting, vegetation, and tree cutting, noise. Uh, we, we have decommissioning regulations, everything that has to be done.
Because, I mean, the signage and the lighting concerns me, especially in a residential neighborhood, so.
We have, you know, standards, setbacks, height, fencing requirements, screening, and visibility. We got, we talk about ownership changes, so all that's in there, uh, safety, abandonment, so it's all, it's all in there.
Is it similar to our solar, ground solar?
Similar, yeah. Uh, so, the next one, number four, discusses medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays. We have currently only large ground-mounted solar array regulations. Uh, now, this would add medium and small scale. And the small scale are the ones that are starting to become popular for single-family homes. Uh, folks would rather have a alternative to placing solar panels on the roof. Uh, we actually have three small ground-mounted solar arrays already in town. Uh, unfortunately, we have no regulations regarding them. So, this would play, put in place some regulations regarding size, setback, screening, et cetera. So, that would address that, and so that's an amendment to our current solar array bylaw. Uh, it also would require site plan review. Number five.
Any questions on the fourth?
No, just, I was going to make a comment, if, if we don't get in front of it, we're gonna have them everywhere. And a lot of people are getting solar-mounted roofs, roof-mounted solar, but a lot of people, like you said, don't like that, and are, and are looking for other alternatives to put it. If we don't get ahead of it, it's gonna get ahead of us.
Just, nothing to deal with this, but they were coming up with shingles. But they seem to have disappeared, they didn't work out, no.
No, they're just still out there, Tesla, Tesla definitely has their own.
But you don't see them going in, it must be expensive, expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you just see the panels going on roofs.
Yeah, right now, the technology is changing so quickly, uh, that it's tough to, you put a, you put a solar array on your house today, it's obsolete by tomorrow, because it's just changing so quickly. But yes, I believe that, you know, the Tesla, they use shingles, and I've seen other companies that, basically, shingles are solar panels.
I'm surprised, got to look that up, like.
You know, the efficiency is a little lower, and the utilities don't give rebates as well as for the other one.
And the other thing, the other big thing is the batteries in the houses. So, you have the lithium-ion batteries in homes. And so, what people don't realize is, if you put them in your garage, you know, you have to put a baller in front of it, because if they, if you hit it, and, you know, those batteries catch fire, it's not a good scene. And same thing with, um, if it's in the house, some folks are putting them in the house in the basement. And I believe the Building Department, the Building Inspector is requiring that it's in essence a fireproof room, uh, to at least slow it down if something happens, because it is, you know, the batteries are, you know, have their benefits and they have their drawbacks.
What happened in New York there, where the guy brought his bicycle and, you know, but then the batteries in it?
Yeah.
And it caught on fire in the hallway, and up goes the whole building.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something that's, I think, commonplace, but, you know, you have to prepare that if it does happen.
I think the, you know, I think it off topic too much, but I think the industry's addressed that. I just put one in last week, that the, the container itself is fireproof. So, the batteries are contained inside a fireproof cabinet, which seems to be, were pretty good, and it was a personal line in it as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I figured they would address it, you know, because if, if, it's, it's not good for business if you're burning all the houses down.
Don't they usually blow up anywhere, you know? I think you see it, it's got, it's got flames.
Yeah, so I, I mean, you know, it.
It's because they didn't put them in, right?
Um, so then the next thing we get into is number five, which is Section seven. And we, we currently talk, have what's called, what's known as pork chop and hammerhead lots. And we're just gonna rename that and call them estate and retreat lots. Same, same size, same frontage regulations, it's just renaming, just changing the name. Then the next one, uh, within that section is also driveways. And one of the things that we're talking about is having one driveway access opening per lot allowed within all residential districts. Driveway access permit shall be issued by the Hanson Highway Superintendent. So, that's where the driveway access, Mr. Kenner, there you go, question earlier in the evening. Uh, then we talk about accessory buildings in particular. We just add a little clarification, uh, there seems to be some confusion regarding accessory buildings and proximity to property lines, so we've just tried to clarify that a little better. Uh, then we have, uh, we, then we get on to our off-street parking and loading area requirements, uh, which were very confusing and ambiguous. We're going from a park, parking spaces being required for net floor area to gross floor area. It's just easier to figure out what, how many spaces you need. Uh, we've made some clarif, corrections, such as industrial or wholesale, there was some typos in that section, so we've corrected that. And then we've just created a clear-cut, minimal dimension requirements for parking stalls. So, uh, what we had before was, uh, first three hundred square feet plus the turning, it was just very confusing. This is just clear-cut, you know how many parking spaces you need, uh, what size they are, uh, what the loading requirements are for the, for, uh, particular businesses. That's what clarifies that. And then, lastly, uh, we get on to number nine, so that was five through, uh, five through eight. And so, last one is, section is number nine, which is our adequate access. Uh, there was a lot of ambiguity and, uh, things are just not clear in this section, so we've, uh, we've added some language to just try and make it clearer, so that, uh, the board can, the applicants could understand what the board is looking for on the plans, they can make a decision, and make it clear that these are two separate filings. One adequate access is a one type of filing, and improvements to private ways is a different type of filing. So, we sort of separated them and just clarified them as to what the requirements are. So, it's just plans, uh, plan requirements, informational requirements, pavement width on improvements to private ways matches now the subdivision control law pavement requirements. And that covers that. So, I know we covered a lot of ground, I don't know if you wanna just take it individually there, if anyone has any questions on a particular section.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
On the last one, on the adequate access. One of the things that bothers me about it is that there are different kinds of private ways. There are private ways that are owned solely by an individual. There are private ways that are owned by the butters. And there are private ways that are owned by the town. Those that are owned by an individual, it seems to me that if you require a lot owner to improve that way, you would impinge on the ownership of the way. You may ask him to trespass on somebody else's property. An example of that is Upper Lakeside Road, which is owned by an individual that we don't know. It's probably an heir to someone who owned it before. In the case of jointly owned roads, where the butters own generally to the middle of the, of the way, and you say to the person who wants to develop a lot, you have to do something with the way. You again have the problem that you're asking him to impinge on his neighbors, and maybe his neighbors should be contributing to that. In the case of a town-owned way, it seems to me unreasonable to ask the lot owner to do anything, especially when you've already approved other people, other butters to that way of building there in the past. So, I don't understand why you would impose a requirement on one lot owner to improve a town way. So, I think maybe there ought to be some language in here with respect to asking someone to do something to the way that addresses those, those situations.
I think there is in, in the, I assume this is still part of the original, added to the original. In the original, there is some language in there that, that, you, I can't think of the exact words, I'd have to look it up, which can. Overburdened, somebody that's on the tail end of the road, and he has to be paved all the way down, and the water service all the way down, and stuff like that, it goes beyond the value of the land. They've worked that way in the past, but they, the court systems, if I remember right, when we did the bylaw on it originally, was that they were trying to upgrade the roads that go in there, because the towns can't afford it, obviously, and they, you've gotta do something, take care of the drainage, or catch basins, or re-grading the road, or sidewalks, or whatever may be needed.
I understand all that, Don, but the point is that why would you impose that on one of those lot owners when the rest of the lot owners benefit?
Well, you got, you only got one guy that's coming in, I'll say, for example, and the rest of them. Extortion, they're already there, so what are you gonna do? You can't go back and make somebody that's already been using the road.
Why not?
Well, if you wanna make, try and get that through, good luck.
Well, good luck getting one guy to do it.
Well, that's why you, you hope that, he, he doesn't have to do everything.
Well, in the case of Lakeside Road, you imposed that on Corin Cori Hurna, and he, he paved the road, he put in the drainage, and all the people who live on there benefited. Why should he have done that?
I'm not aware of that, is that, where did that happen?
Well, you know where Lakeside Road is?
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah.
One of the three lots that are approved by the planning board for the, the, the old primary boss were only given to him if he did that.
Yeah, it was before my time, so, I believe, I don't remember.
No, I mean, we have an example of the other situation where the town literally owns the way. Told one lot owner that he has to improve the road. All the other butters don't have to do anything except enjoy, right? And you all did that.
Oh, you know, I think one of the things you guys are talking about is, you know, I think every road, depending on the developer that built it, right? Uh, the easements that run on those roads, uh, you know, for, you know, everyone owns to the middle of the road, but there's easements that are true for each person who lives on that street, right? So, however, that document's written also has something to do with the way that we would have to approach that, on any given instance.
There are those situations, those situations exist.
Yeah, and there's many of those all over town.
The road is one of those roads, one that belonged to the middle of the road. But down in Mont Ponce, for example, many of those streets are owned by the town. We can know that not streets.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct. So, I think something should be said about how you determine that somebody has to do what basically is the town's business.
Well, all this I knows what they made me do when I was building a couple of houses on those dirt roads, so.
I know.
I've done it.
We've had this conversation many years ago.
I know, I had to run the water down the street, and stuff like that, but, you know, and put in a fire hydrant. One road they wanted me to pave, for example, and, uh, when I told the residents of Ron there what was gonna happen, that road was gonna get paved, they didn't want it. I said, well, you better go up and tell the planning board, because they want me to pave the road. They don't want it paved because the cars go too fast if it's paved. They wanna put the, like the ruts in the roads to slow the traffic down. So, they didn't, the planning board heard the, the problem, and they voted that I didn't have to pave it, but do the water, so. It's just one of those things, I don't know, give and take, I guess, because it was well worth putting the water down there. So, the people could have town water instead of wells, and they had fire protection, so.
I think adequate access is a viable tool, though, you know, and these roads are, so I've been in pretty bad shape. Rollercoaster roads, perfect example, right? You know, I, you had to do something at some point, you know, it, it should get paved, because it would make more sense, because, you know, for environmental purposes and everything else. So, I think, you know, the key for us, in, in my opinion, is when we approve these houses on these roads and the creation of these roads, like Alden Way is a perfect example, um, there should be consideration for how that road should be built, and whether it should be accepted or not. So, I mean, you know, without adequate access, you wouldn't be able to accept it, so. You tell me, I don't, why would you get rid of adequate access? Good bylaw.
Ken, Donald Davis in the office.
Yes, sir.
You're aware, I'm not a health, I'm not a Hanson resident, but I am a taxpayer in town. And the board's probably aware I am challenging that bylaw in court. What about the costs associated with adequate access? How should that be determined?
Good question, but I, I don't think that anybody could come up with a formula.
As you plainly said, you've got a bylaw that's ambiguous, incorrect. Now, you're trying to change it, but who's paying for this? Now you're trying to change it, but who's paying for this?
The person who wants to put a house on the road.
You might think it's funny. You might think it's funny.
Excuse me?
Yeah, you might think it's funny. Maybe some of us don't think it's funny.
You, you better get a hold of yourself.
No, you get a hold of yourself.
Uh, come on, we, we know it.
Yeah, let's keep it simple. The other guy that tells the lies.
You're telling me to, excuse me, are you accusing me of lying?
Yes.
Right? Because I would ask that you leave this meeting. I would ask the chairman to ask you to leave because you have no right to call me a liar in a hearing. Right? That's slander, okay?
The cost associated with, with.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I think you should leave.
Good.
Okay?
That's good.
Yep.
I'm glad you think that.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, Mr. Chairman. I've been insulted in a meeting and I want you to do something about it. Yeah?
The tour you started to go at it.
I didn't go at anything. I've got somebody, we, you've got a, a person sitting here telling me. Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not kidding you.
Yeah? If, if. Point of order, I'm asking you to do something.
I am, I'm trying to do.
Go ahead, do something. Start talking about it and do something. Are you all set, Mr. Diaz?
Um, I think so.
Can you behave? Keep your temper down?
I think so. My point is that the costs associated with this.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking you to remove this person from the room. I don't think it's necessary.
So if I can finish.
Gentlemen, send him a directive to go on that.
I, I think my point has been made, okay? I think that the planning board should look at the cost considerations, the way that this bylaws apply, and that's why I'm here.
Okay, your point is taken.
Point of order. If, if, if someone said to you, right, that you were a liar in this room, what would you do? I just want to know. I want, I'm asking you because, you know, I, I gave you a point of order. This person accused me of lying, right, in this room, and you choose to do nothing. What does that say about you? Thank you. I'm done.
I think to continue, I'm getting a big deal, I believe. I think he's all done. He said he was.
This is a public hearing. I'm not going in. Yeah, right now.
Um, I forgot what's my answer, Tony. All right, let's move on to the next item.
Maybe there's an apology.
So the next.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter because it's a friend of his, that's right.
So the next, the ne-
Oh, come on, yeah.
So the next thing would be for the planning board to vote on these individually, beginning with number one, which is currently Article thirty-two, which is the use regulations.
Um, I'm sorry, was it thirty-three or thirty-two?
It would be, it's currently, uh, Article thirty-two on the warrant. Uh, it's number one in the index on the letter, and that's for the use regulations.
It's Article thirty-three, yeah.
Thirty-three.
Oh, oh, okay. All right.
Okay, Article thirty-two.
Yeah, currently Article thirty-two on the warrant.
Right here. Yep. You want a motion?
So I'm looking for the board to decide whether to vote and approve this to move it to town meeting.
So motion to approve. Article thirty-
Article thirty-two.
We have a second?
Well, why don't you put that motion to recommend Article thirty-two to the
To recommend.
Recommend and support Article thirty-two to the town meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
That's four one.
And the next one would be number two, which is currently known as Article thirty-three regarding the detached accessory apartments.
Do I have a motion for that? Motion to approve Article thirty-three to go to the town meeting. Uh, second. Any discussion? See, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May.
That's three, one, one.
The next one would be what is known as Article thirty-four regarding the battery storage farms.
Motion to approve Article thirty-four to move forward with the town meeting. A discuss, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Three, one.
Done.
Mm-hmm.
That, yeah, that, yes.
Yes, that is, thank you.
And that's four, one.
The next one would be, uh,
Article thirty-five.
Article thirty-five, which is, um, medium and small ground-mounted solar arrays.
Motion to approve, or motion to vote to approve.
Recommend.
Recommend Article thirty-five to move forward with the, um, town meeting. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Is that, yes, John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Four one.
items five, six, seven, and eight on the index. Pork chop lot, um, so this would be all under Article thirty-six.
And we got Article thirty-six and thirty-seven?
Yep, Article, Article thirty-six covers numbers five through eight in the index.
Okay.
Uh, so if you want to vote as, uh, Article thirty-six as is.
As written?
Yes, sir.
Vote to approve Article thirty-six as written. Second. Any discussion, divisions, resolutions? See, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four one.
And the last one is number nine, which is Article thirty-seven for adequate access.
Motion to vote on whether or not to approve Article thirty-seven to move forward at town meeting. Did you say that correct?
I'd say it's a motion to, uh, recommend approval of Article thirty-seven at the town meeting.
I'd like to make a com, I'd like to make a comment for the record. Uh, I was not allowed to finish what I was saying and I was insulted in the process. Thank you.
Also for discussion, um, okay?
Get you on Article thirty-seven?
Article thirty-seven for discussion. I, I think that we should take a look at that, reexamine it a little bit. Seems to be a lot of questions and I think we could dig into it a little bit further. But in my opinion.
You listen.
Before fireworks. Tonight or, or later, because this is going to town being moved.
Interesting way of putting and calling fireworks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So like, I guess, so my question would become, are you, do you, so what's the mo, what are you, what are you, are you going to voting? Are you voting to move it to town meeting or not?
Well, yes, yeah. Just documents.
But you'd like to further examine it?
Yeah.
And, so I guess you're ready for a vote?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, during the discussion.
Wait a minute, we've got one for both.
Um, just during your discussion prior to vote. What is it? For the record, just want to make sure that, that the record is flushed, that there are no town meeting articles available for public here.
Okay. Um, did you get that for the record?
Yes, I did send, I did send Mr. Diaz a copy of the articles, but he is correct.
All right, now we'll be back to Article thirty-seven.
Yep.
And we want to refer that, you know, I understand, refer it to town meeting.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. And it's been seconded?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there is a discussion. I get a question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May.
May.
You don't want to go to the town meeting? You, you made a motion.
Yeah. But I have to vote, I can vote one way or another. Yeah, but what, my, my gripe is the, the amendments to it. We either go to a town meeting floor or not. Why are we amending it? That's my question, so.
Well, not amended, he, he's giving it to the town meeting. We's not voting on it, you know, like we passing on, on other stuff, town meeting. It still goes to town meeting.
All right, I'll change my vote to a yes.
Doesn't it?
Let's be done with it.
Yes, it would go to town meeting and then it would be voted on to change it or not change it.
What is your question then?
I just said, I just changed my vote to yes.
Oh, okay. So it's three, one, one. Going to vote at town meeting. Thanks, John.
Uh, next would be for you to vote on your next meeting, which would be May eighth.
I lost my paper.
Motion for the next meeting to be made, made. So we're not so good at that.
Second. Motion's been made for the next meeting at May eighth, um, yeah, April eighth, May eighth. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that, um, the next time some clown comes into a meeting and starts berating you people about something, I, I hope you remember this night. That's all I have to say.
Okay, there's a motion, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Does it date? Next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, three, John?
I already said aye.
Okay.
And unless you have something else for the good of the order or anything, uh, vote to adjourn.
Remember, vote to adjourn. Nobody wants to leave?
Motion to adjourn.
I, I mean, maybe we should, uh, have some sort of discussion at some point about, about, about how we handle these situations. So that, you know, um, because it is more common than you might think that one person will get attacked.
Oh, yeah.
And so in that type of situation, is he allowed to stay? Or is he not allowed to? If, if it's a public hearing, are you, is the chair allowed to, uh, dismiss somebody?
I don't.
We, we might need to discuss that further.
You want to discuss it tonight?
Yeah, I think we should. No, I think, I think it should be an agenda item.
We might need to think of an agenda.
Is he allowed to speak as a non-resident of the town, though?
Yeah, he's not, not even a resident. He said he was a taxpayer but not a resident.
No, he's not a resident.
Yeah, it was, is he allowed to speak, though?
Yeah, it's a public hearing. A public hearing, it doesn't, you don't have to be just a resident.
He's not allowed to treat, um, board members the way he treated me, right? Yeah, you can, you can roll your eyes because, you know, you know, this is going to come back on you because I'm going to, I'm going to hire somebody to come in here and talk to you like an asshole and see what you do about it. Right, whether you like it or not.
I, I don't like it.
You're supposed, you're the chairman, you're supposed to back up the board members.
I did.
Instead, you're backing up your old friend back there, right? So, yeah, yeah.
I'm not going to get in an argument with you.
Yeah, well, I'm getting in an argument with you. I think, I think you're, you're insulting this board by not doing anything about that.
I did.
I asked you to do something. I told you, point of order, you didn't do anything. Oh, oh, cut it out, buddy, you know, what's that?
Cut it out, buddy.
Yeah? I asked you to remove that person from the room, right, because they were insulting a board member, right? And you don't do, you didn't do anything, right? What does that make you?
Makes me be a dog. I, I don't get into arguments. It's not worth it.
So it's okay, so someone can just come in here if they want and, and say whatever they want about me and insult me and call me a liar?
Even if he came in and said it to me.
Yeah.
An individual.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Shame on you, okay? I don't even know to say anything to you. I have nothing to say to you because you're an asshole.
You're going into it.
Yeah?
Now, now, see, you're calling me a liar. Now what am I supposed to do?
Well, do something about it. What are you going to do?
Nothing.
Ask me to leave the room?
No.
No, of course not.
No.
Because you don't have any guts.
Because you're, no, because you're, you're an elected official. I can't throw you out. This is a public meeting and I can't throw him out. The only way you can get it is to get cops. You want to call the cops?
Yeah. Oh, we'll see what happens the next time. Someone else in this room gets paraded by, like, somebody sitting in the audience who doesn't even live in the town.
So, so can we put an agenda item on first, please?
Yeah, we should because that has happened before at another meeting, at the select board meeting, and they told a person to leave rather than to call the cops.
So the agenda item is you'd like to discuss.
Policy.
Policy?
Protocol or policy, how to deal with, um, someone speaking out of, uh, term, um.
Insulting board members?
Board members, et cetera. Yeah, this is no reason why a volunteer should go, go home upset about somebody saying false claims about him. I'd feel the same way if it was me.
Yeah.
Or another board member.
Yeah, what he did was wrong, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt.
And yet we have to have protocol to see, to balance them out when they do that.
No, no. I didn't, I didn't get him out. So somebody had to call the police.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's happened before.
Yeah, it, it's happened before and at the select board's meeting, um, that's they gave him the option to either leave or wait for the cops to come and get him out.
In, not bringing up the exact situation because I was there, but that was, that was just somebody swearing. That, that wasn't somebody, uh, saying false claims about the board.
Yes. So someone should not be allowed to come in here and call somebody a liar. Especially an elected official.
Agenda item next meeting?
Yeah, I'll put it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go. You drank too much coffee, I get it.
So you still, you still need to pick a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn the meeting. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.